Do we get a...
You are not recording, so we're not doing you a minute.
I will now call the Planning Commission meeting of Tuesday, October 17th, 2017 to order at 6:01. Can we all stand for the flag suit, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Commissioner's party is absent. Commissioner Sarian is absent. Commissioner Finlay?
Is here.
Commissioner Kirby?
Here.
Commissioner Beck?
Yo.
Commissioner Cord is absent. Chair Higera?
Here.
Number three on the agenda is the public comment period, and there's no one to public comment tonight, so we will go on to number four, meeting minutes. Approval of the minutes of September 19th, 2017. Are there any corrections?
Not here.
Can I have a motion?
Chair, move to approve as submitted.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Moved by Melanie, seconded by Paul, and all present approved. So, do you want me to tell you who is not here, or will you keep track of that?
I'm sorry?
Should I tell you that the commissioners that weren't here?
Uh, no, I've got that. Thank you.
Number, or B of the minutes is the approval of the October 3rd. And that, by the way, that was the special meeting, wasn't it? Oh, this is the special meeting. Approval of the October 3rd, 2017, Planning Commission's special meeting. Can I do, are there any corrections on that? And if there's not, can I have a motion?
I'll move to approve as submitted.
Second?
Chair, I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Moved by Josh, seconded by Melanie, approved by everyone. So then we move right to the meat of the matter, the street graphics. Number five, the street graphics ordinance amendments.
Alright, thank you. And to let you guys know about feedback and everything, we have a new device that's going to capture it as it comes up, so it'll filter that out. So if you do hear it, it'll correct itself. We have some new stuff in there.
Shouldn't be there though to begin with was my contention. But that's okay. I'll come early next time and check it.
Okay, we can talk about it later. Alright, so to let you guys know, this is going to be something we're going to be working on for a while, so don't feel like everything has to be addressed today, because it is a pretty big ordinance as well as a big topic. So we did open this up a few months ago, I believe, in this past February, March area, but we're going to be opening it back up now that we're done with cannabis. So Chapter 8 of the municipal code for the city addresses sign ordinances.
I think it's a little too loud.
Okay.
I would concur.
It's a lot of treble and its shrill, it hurts. Thank you.
Sound better?
It's still loud.
Going in the right direction.
It's still loud.
Lot of mid-range now. You can?
No, this is, but I, it's how I can hear myself that's different. I'm like...
It's a lot of ringing up here.
Well, let me know if it keeps going, but I did, I did put it down quite a bit, but according to our tech person, I have to keep it at a certain rate so that it gets through the system.
So what's the feedback? We're getting feedback, too?
Yeah, like I said, we have, we have new equipment that's going to try and take care of it, but we're still working on it. But again, we'll talk about it.
We'll see what happens, okay.
As long as you can hear out there, and as long as it's not too bad for you guys. And the other thing too, I'm a very loud talker.
So maybe push your mic a little farther away.
Yeah. So, because I can hear you guys pretty well. I mean, I can kind of hear something, but again, like I said, I am not the tech person who does this, so I will just bring it up to them as we go forward.
Okay.
And I'll continue to try and make some adjustments for you guys. So, okay, sorry about that. Going back to it, so the city of Mount Shasta, like many cities, has a sign ordinance, and that kind of dictates how we put those things together. Sorry, I've lost my place now that I'm trying to listen for that and doing too many things at one time.
Sorry.
It's okay, I'm only one person for this, so I have to do a number of things. Sorry. Great. So going back, so the American Planning Association has released a fourth addition to their planning assessment reports on street graphics and the law. So the reason why we use the word "street graphic" in planning rather than "sign" is that murals, paintings, and things like that can be used for advertisements or signs that aren't technically signs, so that's why we use the general term "street graphic" rather than "sign." It encompasses a lot more factors. So within the guide that we have for street graphics is it, they have a model ordinance that I've provided in your packets, that they recommend cities review to kind of shore up their ordinances to meet current regulations with signs. So there was a Supreme Court case in, I believe, 2015, 2016, that did change some of the things that we can regulate on the national scale. And then within the state of California, we have some regulations that we have to take into consideration.
Can you spell those out? I mean, because is it Reed versus the City of Gilbert?
That's the national one, but then the state of California has a few that are unique to California, specifically with billboards. So California, you are able to prohibit new billboards from being put up, which is very unique from the rest of the United States. But there's a few others. If you want, I can get all of them if you want. There's probably a couple dozen.
I was familiar with the billboard, because we have our billboard that has been a topic of discussion. We took a billboard down.
Correct.
Actually, at the south end of town.
Correct. And the way that that works, so the way that it works is that we can't necessarily require them to take them down, but what we can do is we can prohibit any new billboards from being erected. And so if someone wants to change the location of the billboard, they can do that as long as they keep the square footage of that same billboard, and they don't add to the total amount in a jurisdiction. Additionally, if a billboard does fall between 50, if it falls under 50% damaged, they're not allowed to put it back up. But if it's 75% damaged, they can put it up as-is, similar to other non-conforming signs. So we kind of consider it a non-conforming with the special status of if a billboard moves a location, if they take down the old one, there are some things we can do as far as placement, but they can keep that square footage. So that is very unique for California and how that works, but I can delve into those in a little bit. But the reason why a lot of cities regulate signs is because of the overall aesthetics and you know the feeling of it. So similar to our architectural design guidelines, every community and every city has a different feel when you come into that community. The difference between a sign ordinance and architectural design guidelines is that the guidelines are kind of a softer regulation, where a sign ordinance has requirements that you have to meet. So when we talk about planning for signs, there are three things we keep in mind, which is time, place, and manner. And so there's a certain, you can put time limits on how long signs can be put up. For example, our temporary banner permit allows for 120 days right now, which you'll see in the model ordinance they replicate. But as opposed to saying temporary banners, they have a broader definition of what a temporary sign or a street graphic is, which includes those flags and things that we haven't been able to regulate in the past. In addition to that, the placement, so when we talk about signs, the difficult part is...
Well, can you back up, if you don't mind? Can this be kind of conversational, just, I mean, with me, but just, do you, would you consider the sandwich boards temporary?
Correct. There is a way to talk about those, and I'll get to that when we get to the ordinance. That's, sandwich boards are temporary under the new recommended definition. So what they define a temporary street graphic is, is a sign or picture or photograph that is not permanently affixed to anything. So a sandwich board would be a temporary graphic, and one of the things you can do with that, that you can't necessarily do with a permanent, is you can make it seasonal. So for example, now we make our encroachment permit seasonal for sandwich boards. We say during these months, you're allowed to put it out, but come the winter months, you have to pick it up. So we can put a time restriction on those for safety reasons, which is the big thing with us with snow, as well as, usually it's safety, safety related. But there's also circumstances where we can ask them to remove it if we're doing work in that area as well. So...
What if there are also widths in terms of like ADA compliance?
Correct.
Something like that that we also have to comply with?
Yeah. And so, and that's why we also require them to pick them up at the end of day and put them into their establishments, so that they're not left on the street in case where street sweeping or other types of things. They can be difficult to see because they're normally not illuminated. I say "normally" because watch, someone's going to try and illuminate it with a battery. We've seen things happen. So normally, they're not illuminated, and so they can be difficult to see at night. So those are considered a portable street graphic or not a temporary street graphic. But you can call those out and have a few different regulations for those, as opposed to other temporary banners, or, sorry, temporary street graphics. So again, the reason why we really stress regulations of signs, because it really could change. So if you take, if you kind of picture Las Vegas, Las Vegas has a certain feel to it, and those signs and the lighting and the neon and kind of the old style really contribute to that feeling people have there. And so when you come to our community and you start thinking about the context of the sign, ours is very different from that. And so we want to put regulations in place to maintain our context that we feel is appropriate. And you can do that through a variety of regulations. Now, when we talk about the time, place, manner, going back to that, time, place, manner can't be used in a way that just strictly prohibits a certain type of sign. That's why I said billboards in California is very, very unique. That's not like that in others, other states. So for example, this, our current sign ordinance prohibits any digital signage, which is not really something we can legally hold up, because there is a time, place, and manner possibility for some of those things. So for example, the efficiency of gas station signs. The digital signage or the LED lighting is an energy saver for those signs, as opposed to backlighting and some of the older functions that are served there. So we have to, signs are kind of a gray area, and you have to be careful about how you regulate them, because it is a part of a freedom of speech discussion.
Well, when I was reading, you know, the, about Reed versus Gilbert, it sounded like Thomas's said that you could regulate lighting. He specifically allowed that we could regulate lighting.
Correct.
In our sign ordinance.
To a degree, yes.
So what do you mean, when it says regulate lighting, and you're saying "to a degree", what does that mean?
So, the point of what I was getting at is that you can't come out and strictly prohibit something because you don't want it. You have to have a very strict reason for why you're regulating it. So for example, for lighting, you can regulate that. You can regulate a number of things with signs, you just can't over-regulate, and that becomes a very delicate balance. So for lighting, for example, possibilities that you have are, when the business is not in operation, you can require them to turn off the lighting that illuminates their sign, because of light pollution, which we've shown is, with what we'll get back with the lighting ordinance, can be a factor for safety. It can be a factor for wildlife and environmental factors. So lighting has, like I said, you can do the dimness of the lighting, but in most cases, you can't say, "No, you cannot illuminate your sign at all." That wouldn't fly. That would be considered a taking, because some people need that lighting, for example, like a gas station sign, because they have a 24-hour business, and they do need the illumination so people can see.
So we can regulate the kind of lighting?
Correct. There are certain aspects, so you can regulate a lot of the aspects, but you have to be very careful about not over-regulating to the point that people can argue a taking, which for the public knowledge, a taking is basically someone, most likely the government, coming in and regulating to the point where you can't do your business. That's an economic hardship, and that it infringes upon your personal liberties. And like I said, with signs, it's a very fine line. And in some cases, you know, you know, it brings up, there are certain sign or street graphic ordinances, like bends, that are very, very strict, but they've gone through a number of public inputs, and they've still allow some flexibility of use. And so we have to balance that as we go forward. And I think that's the bigger thing, is making sure that we're creating something that holds the context of the area, but doesn't impose so many restrictions that business owners can't, you know, put something together that makes their business viable.
So what we have now is we don't, we haven't wanted internally illuminated signs?
Correct.
In the downtown district. So, I mean, are you thinking that that is over-regulating?
So again...
I mean, again, because...
So we'll, so we'll get to that. I think the big thing is just to wait and let me get through the whole staff report, because these things get answered.
Okay. Because with, you know, in this case, because we have a lot of context, I think context is really helpful.
Yeah. Again, I'll get to it. Let me get through the whole thing, and then you can go. So, so again, the reason why we do it is, is we do want to protect the context of the community, but you also want to balance that with, you know, business and being able to not only help business, but also, you know, the city also goes through street graphics. We have a number of public signs that should kind of morph into this and follow the regulations. So going back to the PSA report, and it is available if any of you guys would like to have it. I have a PDF copy and a hard copy. It's actually really interesting, but that's just me, again, I'm weird. So the street graphics systems kind of focus on the allowable land uses for signage or street graphics and into a sign ordinance, the design of a sign in terms of size and manner, which you can regulate that, and balancing the built environment and signage to effectively communicate the intended message. And I think that last part is, is kind of speaking to what I'm trying to get at as far as balancing. You want to make sure it fits the built environment, but it also is doing what it needs to. So the report recommends five criteria for evaluating street graphics for their effectiveness, which is on page 10, that goes into that. So like I said, it's always, so similar to a conditional use permit, we always look at a use for how it fits into the context of where it's at. How does it affect the surrounding area? How will it affect the uses that are there? And we do the same thing for signs, is we really kind of take a look at how it relates to the building it's on, how does it relate to the area that it's in, which kind of speaks to the downtown. So some of the street graphics that are called out that I, that I want to talk about specifically are ground graphics, which is kind of your monument signs, pole signs that you see, that are not affixed to a building, but it's just affixed to a place on the property. Wall and roof graphics, which are your flush-mounted signs traditionally found in the downtown area. Projecting graphics, which are perpendicular to the building face. Onings, which usually are over doorways as well as windows, which can have graphics on them as well. And then what we have a category for the catch-all, which is special street graphics, which is going back to the murals, painting, your sign on your building, rather than affixing it with a different material. And so I kind of provide a background to each one of those from 11 all the way to 14. The only thing I'll call out is on page 12 of the packet, we talk about, you know, how, we start to talk about signable area. And so that's what's really unique about this ordinance as opposed to our old ordinance, is our old ordinance looks at linear footage of a building, and then it has a maximum square footage of 33 square feet. So I'm going to switch sides and go over there, because I'm a visual person, and so I have a board that I can draw on and kind of explain what signable area means. So give me two seconds. Alright. That one was a lot louder. So, this is my very crude drawing. I apologize that I did not go to art school, nor did I take an art class. So, this ordinance really wants to balance the built environment and the architectural features of a building with a sign. So for example, think of it also like decorating a room. You wouldn't put a small painting onto a large blank wall. You would put the small painting more in the context of maybe being next to a window on a smaller wall, or, you know, putting it with a number of other things that kind of fill a little bit more space. And so when we're talking about it, that's what we call a signable area. And so, for example, when we take a building that kind of looks like this, like a shop out in the downtown district, there's really not much of a signable area on the first floor. There are some things you can regulate in, that I'll bring up later, but for the purpose of this, we'll look at the second floor and say, "Okay, there's quite a bit of area between those two windows." And what we'll do in the ordinance, or what we can do in the ordinance, is set a percentage of surface area. So we kind of look at this and we say, "Okay, there's a lot of things going on with this building, but we'll say 80% of the signable area, you can put a sign." So what we would consider a signable area is an uninterrupted piece of the building. So our signable area would be green in this case, so it would be between those two windows. And then the Planning Commission can set the percentage to whatever you guys feel is appropriate. I think there's some recommended percentages in the model ordinance, but say for example that 80% of it is signable. So what a person would do is they would take the measurement of that square, and they would be able to sign 80% of it. So say it's a 10 by 10, so it's 100 square feet. You would be allowed an 80-square-foot sign. And you can place it anywhere in that box. Obviously, most people like to put it right in the middle, because it just seems much more aesthetically pleasing to most. So say your, your end sign is going to end up looking more of like this thing. So basically, it gives you a sign that matches the building facade, and it allows the person a little bit of flexibility as well. And this is a maximum, too. So if someone wants a sign that's smaller than that, they can do that. And so how we also calculate that is if you have wording, for example, and that's, there's an example of it in, on page 12 of your packets. So say... Oh, God, now I have to spell tattoo.
Chi, another chi.
Right, just so you know, that's, that's box you put there is closer to 50% of that box instead of 80.
Is there two Os?
I think there's two, two Ts, not three.
It looks great.
No, that's, that's correct.
There's two twos, two Os for sure. That's the U sound, tattoo.
I'm not good at spelling either, so we're just going to roll with this.
Three Ts?
No, I don't know what they're...
That looks right.
I have a master's degree.
Let's not argue semantics.
So anyway...
You froze us up with that question, see.
Well, and you can have as many Os as you want. If you want, you can have three. But, so how you would calculate this signable area is it would basically be the sign, basically taken like this. So say this is 25 square feet. So that's how we would calculate that out, is you do a box around the word, and that's how you calculate that square footage. So I mean, so for example, that, that box could be, you know, lettering, it could be a graphic, it could be, you know, a number of different things. So this is, that's an example. The other option they would have, too, is possibly placing something here. So like I said, it gives a number of options, and so you can apply some of that 80% to that, but it's based off of one side facing a street. So that's something we, we'll talk about in a little bit, as far as options beside that. So, this kind of is, is a little bit more flexible than the current sign ordinance, where the current sign ordinance stops at 33 square feet. So like I said, say for example, you can do 80% of 100 square feet, it's an 80-square-foot sign. You wouldn't be able to put that up now. And so you would be left with a much smaller sign that may not look contextually correct in a large space like that. So a better example, this is my attempt at this building. So a better example is when you have something like this that has very large expansive spaces. And so the signable area, and you can have some setbacks from the edge for the signable area, but it would be basically this whole, whole section of the building. And so for larger spaces like this, they recommend a lower percentage, since you don't, like 80, 80% of this is quite large. And so to put it in context, maybe you would say this can, you can put 60% of this, the area.
So, wait, you're just saying that that left side is the only signable area, not left and the right and the top?
It would, and so this is the other thing I'll get to, as far as, you know, double layers, is you can say, you can't, so the surfaceable areas is what faces the street in their current definition, but there are other examples of saying per floor. And so what you can do, so 60% of the signable area, you add those three together, and you can do 60% of that between the three, or you can take 60% of this, 60% of that, or 60% of that one. So there's a number of ways you can do it, but what it basically does is it takes that into context, and then there's just a total amount that's given. So, I'm trying to follow my, my brain right now. I didn't, I'm kind of tired. So, again, we go back to, like I said, normally they recommend being like one, one foot off here, one foot off here, one foot off here, so that you're not having signs that are touching the edges. So say those are your three signable areas. You can either do 60% total of all three combined, or you can do 60% of each and allow to have three total signs only taking up 60% of each of those. So there's two different ways you can calculate it. And it's kind of up to you guys how you want to be flexible about that or not. So for example, if it was a total, and you can spread it out however you see fit, as long as it's within these setback areas, you can do that. But for example, again, if this is a 50-foot-long lineage, you still have a 33-square-foot sign with your current ordinance, which would result in something that's, you know, much too, would like, much too small, if that makes sense. So, like I said, we'll have a number of different meetings on this number.
Do you, do you have an example of a place in town where with the 33-square-foot limit, there is a sign that looks too small?
Josh's shop.
I think that's what this is.
But you, but then you're saying that because the only signable, the way you calculated is just what's facing the street, the halls, that whole south side of the building wouldn't count as the signable area?
It would.
So then how are you deciding which, because you said we were only using one face of the street, but now you're saying if you're on a corner...
You can have both, because that both face the street. So you can have a sign on the front, and then you can have sign on the other side. So we don't allow that right now either. It's all, all just one total.
Address, whatever your address.
Correct. And so this takes more into account of the building itself. So for example, I'm going to attempt to draw the front of Josh's shop, but I'm not very good at this.
So I think it has like two of these things, and then it doesn't like kind of come like... Don't blow up the oven?
Is this your place? I never noticed.
Is that an awning?
Yeah, that's my attempt at a building. So his awning comes down, and so right now he has one sign here, but based on our current ordinance, that's pretty much all he can have, because it's based off of the width of the building, which is the narrower part, and then it's based off of just the liney, the linear feet. So it's not based on square foot, which I think is a bigger difference, is that when you start looking at, like, the difference between linear feet and square foot, that doesn't necessarily translate to something that's going to be architecturally appropriate. So, I think that's a good example of kind of like, so this would be able to have its own signing, signable area, and then this would be a separate signable area. So those totals wouldn't be added together. There'd be one total for the front and one total on the side. But it allows signs on both sides, because it's facing the street and most likely seeing pedestrians. That's, that's their bigger argument. But for example, the first one we showed, like our traditional downtown, where you have one, one building face facing the street, that's probably more traditional, what would happen. So for example, if you take Ace Hardware. So Ace Hardware has a sign up front, and then they would be allowed to have their sign on the side that they have, that they took down, because they're repairing. So it allows for both sides to be used, which we don't allow right now. So...
So we get a mural on one side.
And that, and I'll get into that one, too. So there is an option in the ordinance called a program for graphics, which allows for you or anyone else to propose to the Planning Commission and City Council a program for murals. So what they would be required to have is going to be in the ordinance, and I'll cover that. But technically, murals, if it has anything to do with the business, so say for example, the mural on the side of Ace got replaced with a, like, old-fashioned portrait of Ace Hardware, that would be considered part of their street graphics, because it's about their business. But if you have like a mural part of a special program, even if it's somewhat like your business, it could be considered in that program and not against your square footage, or your, your signable area. So there's different, there's different opportunities there.
Right, so like Berry Vale.
Correct. Yeah, so having that mural on the side wouldn't disqualify them from possibly putting, you know, Berry Vale on the side as a, as a mural as well. So they could probably do both, based on, you know, it'll depend on the program of graphic, but I'll go through that one in a sec. So, does that make a little bit of sense, kind of the way that's going? I'm going to get better at explaining it. It's just, it's not relying on the linear footage or a maximum sign. It's taking a look at the blank pieces of wall between architectural features and making a sign that's, that's appropriate and looks like it should be there. So like I said, if, if Josh were to put up, is only a 33-square-foot sign, it would look something like that. And one thing I am trying to work on is getting some 3D rendering software, so I can actually Photoshop these on, so you can kind of look at the differences and provide some pictures, so I'm working on it.
But that wouldn't be the case, because that square, because if, if that were the front door, then... That, well, the thirty-three square feet, I mean, it would be bigger than that.
Well, yeah, but it's still, it just doesn't necessarily look contextual to that building.
Kinda put it in perspective there, I got about forty feet from the edge to the window, about ten and a half feet high, and I'm allowed a total right now of twenty-five square feet for signage.
Because you've used up some of the front?
No, that's my, that's my total.
Oh, because of the linear.
And that includes my sandwich board, anything else.
So if you could, you could not put a sign on the very front and put a little tiny sign on the side?
Yeah.
You could, he could still sign it, but it would only be based on the front, the address side, linear.
Correct, how we have it written right now. Um, the other thing that the proposed model does as well is it also regulates window graphics, which we don't do now. Um, and they treat this as a completely different signable area. So they recommend a thirty-three percent starting point for window graphics. So if you have, for example, if you take a look at Sportsman's Den, is they have graphics all along their windows, um, and pretty much they take up the whole window, where this would go in and say, you know, you can have thirty-three square feet of your window, have a graphic or a sign. The reason for that is to allow people to look into businesses, and it tends to be a little bit more business-friendly, and it gives people more options as far as, you know, designing the windows. Um, and it's becoming more popular for a lot of offices to do window graphics as well, and so it, it doesn't make sense to regulate all different types of graphics, but not window graphics.
But wouldn't they say, I mean, it's, I mean, you could almost say, but it's their choice to block the window or not with, you know, how, I mean, the, the thinking, I think part of the thinking with not regulating the windows is, you know, during homecoming or during Halloween, you know, it's a big part of our community culture to decorate windows.
So there is a provision in the proposed ordinance for temporary event-based window graphics or sales-based window graphics, which don't infringe upon that. It's if you want permanent window graphics. So if you're doing like homecoming decorating, it's exempt from this ordinance, 'cause that's just silly. So like I said, we don't wanna over-regulate and get a little too complicated. So there, there are provisions in here for that. So, and then the other one is, uh, we don't, the one that we don't really have is projecting graphics. One of the reasons I would advocate for allowing projecting graphics is because it is very pedestrian-friendly, um, and in the right context, they can actually enhance a downtown specifically, when you have a more dense urban environment. So a really good example is Dunsmere does a lot of projecting graphics, and some of them look very tasteful. And how you regulate those is you regulate, those would be regulated based off of square linear feet. So you would be allowed a maximum round of projecting graphics, it has to be a certain amount above the sidewalk, and then you're allowed to put one every so many linear feet if you have a connected building.
How do you regulate tasteful?
Bingo.
Well, so the other thing, too, is, you know, based on this, this can't be a subjective thing. So just because it's not tasteful to you doesn't mean it's tasteful to other people, and so that's why we have to be really careful when we talk about signs, because design is part of freedom of speech. Um, and we have to be careful with that. So if someone wants to put up a sign that's orange and pink, I can't tell them no if they meet our regulations. So again, you know, making taste.
But the orange and pink would have to be something that would go with what their business was, I mean, isn't that? Or the surround, or the neighboring neighbors, isn't that what part of this was about? Is that it kinda has to fit in with the general?
It, it does, but again, colors is something that you can't really dive into. So the one thing that I was gonna bring up before, which I guess I can bring up now, is you can establish areas of what we call special character. So historic districts traditionally become areas of special character, which can impose additional regulations on signs to keep that historic aspect of that. Uh, similarly, in other cases, you see neighborhood associations, neighborhood associations propose neighborhood graphics or neighborhood graphic standards, and that can be, and that's a similar thing to the program graphics, where it would come to the planning commission and city council, and they would say, we want a special area, this is our special area, this is why we want it, and these are the special guidelines within it. Like I said, you can, you can do that, and that helps, you know, like you were saying before, you were talking about, you know, a free-standing sign in a downtown doesn't make a lot of sense because of the, the dense nature, but a projecting graphic or a wall-mounted graphic makes a little bit more sense, 'cause it's a more pedestrian-friendly area. But when you go out to, say, a, um, office park, you tend to have more, like, monument signs or free-standing signs, but yet a flush-mounted sign really wouldn't work that way, because that's not the type of use that's in that area.
Can you explain to me what a projecting sign is? 'Cause I'm not sure, I have one in my mind at all, I don't think I have a picture. Is it like a video?
No.
Perpendicular.
Oh, is that what it is, perpendicular?
Yeah, like the hanging signs.
Okay, never mind, you don't have to tell me.
Like the Armstrongs have hangs, I mean.
I know, I know what we're talking about now, just for some reason didn't go all the way through. Okay. So we can't have, yes, I understand that.
Yeah, I'm just doing it for.
For fun, art practice.
Now you've started.
Yeah, I started.
This is a heaving exercise. Okay.
There, that's, that's.
That being a wall, not a pool.
Correct, that is a wall.
So I did have a que, I, 'cause I actually read that, and I did have a question about that, because we have, uh, I think at some point we will have trees put back on the street, and so some of those kinds of signs might not work well with that. Is that like a district that maybe you can't have those kinds of signs? Or do you warn somebody that the trees are gonna grow up and then what, those signs won't be visible? Or, I mean, how would we do that?
Yeah, some people would argue that, the same thing with the flush-mounted, is that the leaves cover the flush-mounted sign, and then they can't see their sign. Some people had argued that in the past. So like I said, time, place, manner are things that we can control, and so place is definitely one of those things. So we can easily write within their guidelines of saying, if you do have a projecting graphic, it must be X number of feet away from the tree well, and it has to be X number of feet above the sidewalk to ensure safety. And, and you can program them in there. So I think that's kind of, again, where we're getting at, where you can regulate it, but you have to make sure that it's not so regulatory that you can't do it. Similar with any other use that we've talked about.
So like the distance between two businesses?
Correct.
Yeah.
Yeah. So as long as we're, we're doing some, uh, if we kinda do it from a meaningful, like I said, if you have a reason for why you're doing that, that's perfectly fine, and that's defendable. But if you're going through and you say, well, tastefully, um, a tastefully is the one that we always warn people against, don't talk about taste.
And I just, just, I do like projecting signs myself, personally, because I think they add acquaintance, can add acquaintance to a town. So just to let you know that, that's something that I would like us to consider.
Would this be considered like a hanging sign versus a projecting sign, or would they all fall into one?
They all fall into one category. Yeah.
Well, so what about the Armstrong sign? It's still hanging there, right?
Which one?
Um, Vestas Armstrong Law, you know, at the entrance, I mean, the BPOE on that entry.
Is it like a Victoria-looking building on the corner of Ivy and?
No, no, it's right downtown, maybe it's, it's still there.
H R Block Building, the Elks.
The Elks, the Elks building. And you know, there's that hallway, and Vestas had her office there, and there was a hanging sign. So there's the awning, and this sign hangs below it.
That would be in this category. And you can, you can do special provisions for that, or you can separate it out, there's a number of different ways you can do it. But yeah, you can, there, actually, there are some, I believe, for soul connections under their awning, they have a hanging sign, I think.
Right, 'cause those are allowed under the current ordinance.
Yeah, well, we don't really have any provisions for it under our current ordinance, so I wouldn't.
Maybe the old, the one before that, I've been in, this is, this will be my fourth or fifth.
Yeah, there's a lot, uh, that's, that's the bigger thing I've been noticing with the current ordinance, is it's missing a lot of recommendations for certain signs, that I can't, basically, someone comes in and asks for something, and I'm like, there's no language on it, so I have to take it on a case-by-case. Frankly, I haven't had too many. But again, it, it becomes difficult when there is no recommendation. So, um, we're gonna try and capture all of those, um, here. Uh, the other thing to kinda start talking about, which is a little bit different, too, is called items of information. So in your packet, starting on page fourteen, and then there's an illustration on page fifteen, what that kind of means, is it talks about getting rid of clutter, especially for wording, and that's a safety reason. So as people are in their cars and driving, they do actually read signs when they're trying to find somewhere to go. Now, if you have a, for example, on that page fifteen, if you have a restaurant that has a number of different signs or a lot of lettering, that can be very distracting to drivers, and, and there has been a lot of data to show that it increases traffic collisions. Uh, same thing for digital signs that switch messages so often. There, there actually is a scientific limit of, of what they figured out. So this is, you know, they do talk about items of information being optional, um, and you can do it two different ways. So you can either limit the total number of words on a building, or you can do it by syllable. Syllable is very technical, but I mean, again, like I said, there is, um, there are a number of ways to do that. Frankly, I would be one to recommend, uh, limiting the number of words on a building, just because it could be distracting to drivers, and it could, um, kinda misrepresent the context of the city. And you can do that. Do you guys have any questions about how that works?
That seems like a can of worms to me, I don't know. I mean, really, to limit syllables, I, you know, I.
That's why I like the words a little bit better, it's easier to put together.
Right, but it also, even limiting words seems complicated.
Or you guys could choose not to do it. I mean, they did talk about, you know, some people take the items of information completely out of the model ordinance and don't use it.
I think that'd be a good one to revisit when we have all of us here.
Sure.
Because it's, and maybe to look around and see if we, I mean, 'cause obviously we don't want that original, the massive, massive pagodian thing, I mean, it's got every word they could find, you know?
Is the implication that the roof is part of their sign when they're between the two different ones, you know, why?
Yeah, so one of the things that this ordinance, and I believe our current ordinance does, is it does not allow above-roof signs. And that is because they can be very distracting to people, and then it also blocks the scenic view shed. It's similar to billboards, and you can get away with getting rid of those. So that, that's one of the things they talk about in this one, is that, uh, no roof signs immediately takes away a number of distracting features.
Well, right, but if, but if I look at the two images on the right, one has sort of that Chinese roof line, and one doesn't. So are they implying that that is a part of the sign? Like, why is that part of this sign conversation?
Oh, they're just bringing up kind of the, um, when you take away a plethora of signs, you have an ability to put in architectural details to a building that also enhances it in a way a sign can.
As out of being part of the sign?
Yeah, exactly, so that's the, the.
You can still make it look very Chi, Chinese without, um, putting a bunch of.
Correct. And I think that's the, the purpose of why they put that there, is that, for example, someone could easily, I mean, I don't know if, if, are there crystal roofs? Like, you could maybe do kind of a thematic roof. I mean, the thing that comes to my mind is, so there's a place in Wisconsin called the Mars Cheese Castle, and they redid their, it used to be like this shoddy white building, it looked like a liquor store, but everything does in Wisconsin. But they basically redid their arch, architectural, um, design to look like a castle, and it just says Mars on it. But you know exactly what it is, it's the Mars Cheese Castle.
'Cause it's a castle-looking thing.
Yeah, so you can use architectural features to enhance, enhance your, your, uh, building, rather than adding a bunch of signs to tell people what it is. So the other thing that is very different in the ordinance, and I think we talked about this last time, and I wanted to address this with you guys, um, was permitting. So the permitting aspect of our current ordinance is a, is a little interesting, about, you know, certain signs come to the planning commission, but then other signs come to the planning department alone. The, uh, the proposed ordinance, or the model ordinance recommends that signs are administratively done and only brought to the planning commission on cases of appeal or special consideration. Uh, the reason being is it ensures that a city isn't opening itself up for any type of litigation based off of, you know, the, the tastefulness aspect. Not that the planning commission would automatically go to that, but when you have more people looking at something, you also risk, you know, making comments or making a judgment call based off of aesthetics that you can't necessarily do. Um, so what it, the important part is setting up an ordinance that has a checklist that can be administratively done. Um, and for you guys, uh, the last time we talked about it, you had talked about wanting to review certain signs or making sure that the current planner is abiding by the, the ordinance. So I added some language into that aspect that basically says, if there is a sign at any time that's brought into question, it can be brought to the planning commission for review. So say for example, you see a sign go up, and it doesn't look quite right, it looks like it's not, uh, under the regulation, you can basically come in to the planning department and request review at the next planning commission, and then if they don't have a permit, we would go out and get them to go do a permit, and I would report it back to planning commission, saying they didn't have a permit, we're gonna make them conform. Or, or we do look at the permit that has been issued to make sure that it's meeting all of the points that were set aside, and then we would communicate that to you. So at any time, you can question the validity of a sign, and then we would cross-reference it to a permit. Does that kind of address, that, I know that was something that got brought up with the larger group, but that was one of the suggestions by the city manager to kind of address that, to make sure that if we do have a administrative permit, that it is being done properly, is that planning commission can always check?
By the checklist?
Yeah. So the other thing we mentioned really quick, 'cause we did cover this pretty in-depth, um, at the last meeting, was non-conforming signs, and your, so a non-conforming sign is one that doesn't meet your current regulations. So there's a number of ways to protect private property owners while bringing non-conforming signs into conformance, and so I have a list on the bottom of page sixteen. We talk about expansion, so you can't expand any non-conforming side, anytime that happens, it'll have to be brought into conformance. Destruction, so if it's over a certain percentage, they usually recommend fifty percent. Um, that, and I think yours does currently say, if it's destroyed over fifty percent, they can't reconstruct that non-conforming sign. Um, they can construct to the new regulations, but they can't construct to what the old one was. If it's been abandoned for more than a hundred and eighty days, so if a business shuts down and their sign is left up, we can go to the property owner and, and sign them a letter saying, you have to take your sign down, um, off that property. And then a change in the nature of use, so if the use changes and a sign remains, there are cases where the sign can be brought into conformance. That one's a little harder to do, um, we have to take a look at, you know, what nature of use really looks like, and it, a lot of the non-conforming, bringing them into compliance relies a lot on the city attorney's office for signs. So some of them are pretty easy about destruction, you know, abandonment, those are easy for me to go in and enforce, but you know, changes in size, I have to catch those on a case-by-case basis, and then, then change of use is, is a little different. And then the one thing you can do is there is a, a calculation for amortization, which requires all signs to come into compliance to new rules at a number of years. Those years are based off of the size of the sign, the cost to bring it into conformance, um, and that can be calculated out. But my understanding from the last time we talked is you guys didn't wanna do amortization, you just wanted to be able to ensure that all new signs are brought up in the, the proper conformance, and that signs are permitted properly.
Well, what about signs that are, um, put up without a permit? 'Cause we have had that conversation, oh, I didn't know I had to permit, I have a permit, I just spent thousands of dollars on my sign. And we have had that conversation about amortization of those signs.
Yeah, so if they don't have a permit, it's an illegally existing sign, and we do have grounds to go and remove it at the owner's expense. So we can do that, right now.
But we don't.
I haven't had a case yet where I've had to do that.
Right, and the one time that we did, it was for a billboard, and they were allowed to keep it up for, oh, I don't know, a year or two or something, and then it came down. So there was kind of an amortization, kind of negotiation around that sign.
Yeah, I think it's, it's, one, it's gonna be a case-by-case, but in most cases, for example, when I've seen signs go up downtown, and then I check and see if there's a permit or not, I usually send them a, a letter that says you have two weeks to comply, and if you don't, we will come and take it down at your expense. And we have in the past before me done that. Uh, most people usually comply after they get that letter, so that's the great part. But yeah, we, we do it, uh, and we have a good legal grounds to do that, and we do that with other things. So for nuisances, um, there is a little bit stronger nuisance statement in this one, that's not in our current ordinance, which is, um, it's a, it's a combination of this ordinance and some language we've been adapting into all of our ordinances from the city attorney's office to make them a little bit more legally standing for those circumstances. But if it is something that is against our ordinances or a nuisance, we can go in and remove it. So, we've done it in the past, we just haven't had it very often with signs, because like I said, a lot of people usually come in, um, after they get that letter, and most of their signs are usually within the, the ordinance, there was one special case that I had, so.
And then what happened with that one?
I, so that was a, um, that was like a office building, and they put a sign up between some pre-existing posts, and they proved me wrong, and how, so our current ordinance is written that, if it is a sign that has to go and get a building permit, it has to go in front of the planning commission. But how we have it listed in our pricing is if it's anything six feet or above, it has to go to planning commission. Um, and so there's a discrepancy there, and the person pointed that out, and I was like, that is correct. And because the frame. And because the frame was already in place, they didn't have to get a new building permit. So basically they proved me wrong because of how things were worded in our guide that comes with the sign permit and our ordinance itself. So I had to concede and say, nope, you're right, we have to go by the ordinance and you don't have to get a building permit, so they were allowed to put it up. And there isn't a lot of guidance in our current ordinance for non-conforming signs. So for example, I had some issues with the Best Western redoing a lot of their signs. Um, and I had to consult with John Kenny a number of times on how to handle that. And basically we, by law, do have to issue resurfacing letters if they're not changing the square footage of the sign. So I did have to issue some resurfacing letters for them.
What's a resurfacing letter?
Uh, it's basically changing out the design of the sign. Um, so even if, so in their case, they have too many signs. You're only allowed one freestanding sign per property and they have four. And so I was under the impression if they were changing the face of the sign or the design of the sign, that they would have to be brought into conformance. Normally that's clarified in these, uh, whether that is or isn't the case. And so we basically issued them letters to change the face of that and, and allowed them to keep all of those signs on the property. So it, signs are never easy and, and the more we can clarify in the ordinance, the better for me, cause then it's, then I don't have to go to the city attorney every time I get a sign questioned. Um, we do the same thing for heights of signs. So if someone's changing, for example, the gas station signs are, are doing some pretty major upgrades and putting in the LED lights for the numbering and they're doing a lot of design changes. And so when do you draw the line of saying you have to bring those into conformance? Cause right now we have a maximum height of 10 feet. And so what we have been doing that is more legally defensible is just reissuing a cer- a, a letter that says as long as you don't increase the height or increase the surface area, you can do an upgrade. So we have to be careful about those, but I've been taking care of those on a case-by-case. So, the only other thing I wanted to bring up were, were heights and actually it's a good segue, was the 10-foot height maximum. So the 10-foot height maximum is quite restrictive from what I've seen in other um, ordinances. Um, the one thing they recommend in the model ordinance, I did kind of do a filter.
Can heights be, you could do it by area? I mean, um, zones of the city, you could have your height be changed depending on where it is or is it?
I haven't seen it done by zone. I can check. I mean, it's an interesting question, but I haven't seen it myself. Um, what they recommend in the proposed and what I see more traditionally is they rely on setback. So there, so for example, they do, and in the model you'll see that in zones like EC, um, C2 commercial, you can have ground, so these would be considered ground graphics. So you can say, you know, C1 downtown commercial, we don't allow ground graphics and you can do that, um, because it, it doesn't fit with the uses that are usually in a downtown um, area. So for example, say this is Lake Street, which is, this is all general commercial. And so one of the things they recommend doing is you can have a recommended height. The height they recommend is 30 feet overall, but what they recommend is that it has setbacks to each one, so it doesn't um, impede the scenic view shed. So basically what it is, it's kind of a tiered approach. So when you become, you can't put a ground graphic within 10 feet of the property line. And so once you get to that 10 feet, you can put a 10-foot sign. And then if you're 20 feet away, you can put 20 foot and if you're 30 feet away, you can put 30 feet. And it is uh, up to the overall um, judgment of the planning commission where you want to put it at. I wouldn't recommend 10. Um, if you want to settle at 20, that's fine in the future, but just for the discussion today, this is basically kind of the effect it puts in. And obviously you're not, it's not gonna be one solid um, sign or monument sign that's gonna be like that, but if you have a pole sign, for example, and it's 30 feet, you would require it to be 30 feet away from any property line. So that way it's a little bit more off of the avenue and you're still getting that view shed up. Um, you see this actually in a lot of cities with building design, is that to, if you go to certain places like Denver, Colorado, or any type of mountain metropolis city, um, they tend to make buildings stepped so you can still see some of the natural features without, you know, restricting the height of a building. So they applied the same general concept to signs. Um, I think this is a little bit more flexible for people to do. Um, so for example, when you take a look at Lake Street now, the Chevron sign by Sports and Spirits is only about eight feet tall, but it is a little bit closer to the road where 76 has their sign a little bit farther back and it's a little bit taller. It still allows them some visibility from the street, but it also, like I said, doesn't impede um, the view sheds. So there are some options there for height.
Well, it doesn't have view, the, it doesn't impede the view from the street, but it does impede the view from neighboring properties.
Correct.
I mean, I would just, we've got some pretty darn good views around here and I actually think that, you know, obstructing somebody's view, their property with a, a tall sign is al- is also something that we should consider and not just the streetscape.
Yeah, so the, the other thing too, again, like I said, is in this proposed ordinance, when you go to, where are you? So on page 22, they start with the ground graphics. There's always a first section for each one of those sections that says where permitted. A premise may display one ground graphic on each street in which it has frontage in the following zoning districts. And you can confine it to the zoning districts that traditionally have ground graphics, which is usually employment center, general commercial, um, and you could maybe do a conditional use permit process for um, R3 because you do have the hospital in an R3 zone. Um, so for example, this is a general commercial, so you don't really have any residential that's right next to this for most of our general commercial, that that would be an issue. But as you move closer to the mountain or you move to more of our residential areas, you're much farther away from those uses. Um, so that's kind of how you can prevent that from happening for like personal residential views is with proper zoning, you shouldn't be having those general commercial uses like a gas station in a neighborhood that it would be blocking. Or um, I mean, the biggest thing would be the Best Western is really the only lodging on that side of town, but they, they have some of the taller signs. So that's kind of how you can also kind of make sure that scenic view sheds on properties or residential properties or even hotel properties are still protected. But frankly, the people who want the taller signs are usually gas stations and hotels. So if the hotel's being blocked by a sign, I think that's kind of their thing. But um, does that kind of help answer that question a little bit? Is your zoning alone kind of prevents those tall signs from impeding residential, kind of how you guys are positioned?
Well, I wasn't just thinking of residential. I mean, even if I, you know, if I owned an office building, you know, downtown and I valued my view, my views from my office window, I would feel the same way, that I wouldn't want it to be blocked by a tall sign. So I think actually um, considering view sheds for commercial and residential and streets- streetscape is important, because this is a unique place.
Yeah, I think the, the opposing argument is that businesses do still want visibility. And um, one of the things I'm gonna bring, uh, I wanted to bring up about this is I, after we have some discussions on this, I am gonna be presenting at the Open for Business as well as a few other organizations to get the business owner perspective and kind of present this idea to them to see how they receive it. Um, because I know that the business community especially are the ones who think that the 10-foot is just way too low. Um, and so you know, the argument of having good views from an office, I think that's true. Um, but you know, if the businesses are saying we want taller signs and they understand that it's gonna impede the view, I mean, we have to balance a number of different interests with this ordinance.
So I like the setback aspect for the, you know, per foot of sign you are setback, kind of. I like the, I thought of some, of zones, of maybe to think about what zones. And the other thought I had was maybe we should do it no bigger, taller than the roof line of the business.
You could do that.
Like they, no higher than a palm tree? That's kind of, and why do they do that? So I was just wondering if maybe that would be something to share. You know, I'm not saying that that's what we should do, but maybe that's an idea because it's, it could be that if you're, you have a two-story building, you might want a taller sign. If you're a two-story hotel, 10-foot is kind of small. I also have seen communities where they have really low signs and it's very tasteful.
Yeah.
So I mean, like the freeway, the freeway zone, down there by the freeway and the gas station zone is really a separate kind of thing than anything further in.
And similar to like we said before, we can develop a special um, uh, area of character just for the freeway and any, in, uh, any commercial or employment-related business within X number of feet of the freeway is in that zone and we can provide some regulation for that, but-
And do we think about the people driving down the freeway that are admiring our view, but maybe not stopping at this time? And so if you put a big 20-foot sign, I mean, right now we have all these fields that are empty, but if it ever gets developed and people put in 20-foot sign, 30-foot signs, that seems to me it would be a bit of a blight on what we want people to come to our community for.
Yeah, and like I said, I'm gonna try and do the Photoshop thing, but 30 feet is still pretty low. So to put it in context, the um, Best Western signs that are up right now are 60 and 65 feet. So it'd be half the height of those.
If we could mock it up, that would be-
Yeah, I will do that for you guys.
For everybody, actually, cause it, you know, it's, when you bring this out to the public, you are going to have a lot of people say bigger is better and, yeah, but there's other things to consider in it.
Correct, so, are you guys good with this? I'm gonna go sit back over by my-
That was really helpful. I like-
Yeah.
The more illustration, the better.
Okay.
You should save that picture.
Yeah, I'll frame it. Um, so I'm gonna move back to the other ones.
Do you guys have anything you say, uh, you know, Melanie Yar, so I should jump in, okay? If you're interested.
Right, well, I think there are commercial, there are plenty of commercial areas with restrictive sign ordinances that have robust economies. And my concern, I say with some practice, is you, the minimum, you know, the, the maximum becomes the minimum and everybody hits that. You, you allow 30, then we've got a bunch of 30s. And what, you know, we have a unique character and avoiding, and oftentimes, you know, because the minimum, the maximum becomes the minimum and everybody hits that, you can end up with a shouting match. And that's, I don't know if you all, I, you know, I had the chance to go to this wonderful um, sign regulation seminar when I did the Planners Institute, the California League of Cities put on. And you know, they had graphics and photos showing what can happen in areas that are regulated and areas that aren't regulated and, and what can happen. And, and think of that kind of commercial street that you've driven along and there's just sign after sign after sign and you almost can't see the building. And I think that we live in a unique place that our scenery is part of not only what is helpful for our commercial economy, but also for our quality of life. And I think it's, regulating signs is part of that and limiting height, I think is part of that.
There is a limitation with heights though, by the setback. Because if they have had, if that, if the tree, 60-foot treehouse sign had been put back 60 feet, that would be in the middle of their parking lot. So, so that becomes less predominant when, so if somebody's going, well, I don't have enough room to do a setback. I don't have enough room to do a 30-foot sign because my setback won't work. So there is some self-regulating happening with the setback thing. It's, those towns you're talking about, usually those signs are right there on the edge of the road and there is no setback except for the sidewalk that may be there or not. So there, to keep in mind that there is, there is some, you know, a setback is, a 30-foot setback is a long ways, you know? It's like kind of across this building if you were doing a 30-foot sign. And there's not a lot of places that can, and then that's gonna be how, as tall as the peak of this roof, maybe. I'm just trying-
Much taller.
No.
Taller?
Taller than, 30's taller than this?
Yeah.
About 18?
10, 20?
Yeah.
It's right on the edge.
So to kind of put it in perspective, usually a first floor is about 10 feet tall.
Pardon me?
Roughly. Uh, one floor is usually about 10 feet tall, roughly.
So three-story building, the to- as tall as a three-story building is in the 30-foot signs.
Okay.
That's tall.
I'm going, it is tall, but then there's a 30-foot, okay, so if we, we look at, the only really three-story building in town is kind of Berryvale. That's a three, kind of a three-story building and, huh?
Sorry.
Sorry, that's kind of a weird step, it's stepped. Uh, but if you were to put, uh, if we decided we wanted to put a 30-foot sign right there, it would have to be back at the end of the parking lot.
By the garbage can.
Yeah, so it does, I mean, if you think of it that way, we can't put it right there on the front of our building. We'd have to put it way back there in the back and it becomes way less-
Effective.
Effective, yeah. It really doesn't-
Well, right, but, but allowed and would we want that? And then would we consider the neighbors? Would they want that?
Well, yes, and it may be that it is going to have to be something that is looked at in individual, as individual issues, like variances, CUP, I don't know, can-
And again, the other thing to note is Berryvale is in a C1 downtown commercial district. And so if you only have those 30-foot graphics allowable in like a C2 or an employment center, which most employment centers aren't gonna have a pole sign, they'll probably have a monument sign, um, it wouldn't qualify for that. And so you wouldn't really be finding those tall poles really in the downtown area. You would be finding them, and like I said, you could, what you could do is have a special, so I just found it. On page 25, it starts the section on areas of special character. And so what you could do is say, you know, the, the overall height for- I was playing with it, cause you guys were starting to get really quiet. So you could, what you can do is, is like I said, when you go through these like awnings or ground graphics, they do have height regulations um, that you can put in. And so if, if the ground graphics are only allowed, if, if, you could just plainly state ground graphics can only go up to 20 feet if they're 20 feet away or 10 feet if they're 10 feet away. And you can do the tier for that, but then when you get to a special area of character around the freeway, you can allow up to 30 feet. So you could add more height in that special area of character because those businesses that are closer to the freeway are trying to attract those freeway drivers. So, um, I, my, my point for bringing that up is I think 10 feet is too restrictive. And based off of the conversation that I've had and based off of looking at, you know, what other cities do, I mean, even in places like Bend, they still allow up to 20 feet. It is usually what they go for. But again, it, it is ultimately up to your decision if you wanna stay at 10 feet for ground graphics and then have a special area of character around the freeway, you can do that too. Um, it's just something that I've noticed and, and a lot of comments I get from people who are trying to navigate the current ordinance, that 10 feet can be a little restrictive.
But where are they wanting to put their sign? They're, they're taller than 10-foot signs? When they're finding it's restrictive.
A lot of them tend to be office buildings. I'm thinking that maybe this mic is the issue.
Is that, is there a graphic equalizer on that? If you put it flat, a lot of that'll go away.
I don't know what that is because I'm not in charge of that. Um, and I'm not technology savvy, I'm technologically savvy in that way. Um, most of the ones that I have been, and I really don't want to screw with it, Paul, I will just bring it up to Greg Messer. I would rather just do it with him because this costs a lot of money. I know. We can talk to Greg. I just don't want to screw with it right now, cause we are-
There's another graphic equalizer anyway. Just put everything at 12 o'clock and we'll be fine.
So, most of the people who have been asking for the taller ones, like for example, the shopping center um, does want to redo some of the signs that they have, uh, but they didn't, they didn't notice that the one on the west side of their property is quite tall. But when I told them, well, if you change any of it, you have to come into current conformance, which is 10 feet, they said that's not gonna happen with the number of people that we have to advertise in the shopping center, which makes sense. I mean, that's either gonna be really, really tiny writing or you're gonna have a 10-foot sign that's super long to get all of those advertisements on there for their business in there. And one thing to point out as well is there are special regulations in the proposed model that does allow for shopping centers to have some special graph, uh, special graphic regulations of their own regardless of zoning. So if you have multiple people in one building, so like I said, the shopping center is a great example, they're allowed to have a certain type of sign. So we can, like I said, it's, it's all about the context and you can set up the regulations so that it gives context to those things, so it looks appropriate. So you don't have to be so broad that you have to worry about every single case that's kind of like it, but you can think about the time that that would come into play that, you know, it does make sense, a shopping center may need something a little bit taller. Um, and I can, like I said, I think bringing in those mockups will, will help with kind of explain and show that. I just want to run through like one or two really quick things before um, throwing it out to you guys. I've got a lot of information to kind of go forward already and this is gonna take I've got a lot of information to kind of go forward already, and this is going to take a number of meetings, so, just for time's sake. So on page 28, section 1.14 has those portable graphics that I was talking about with the sandwich boards. And so it does allow street temporary, that temporary use to be in there. In addition to that, one of the things we also have is our variance system for signs is not very up to date. I think it says right now that in our variance section, it says it can't be used for signs for increasing height or square footage. This, the proposed model on page 28, on the lower section, section 1.16, gives a little bit more detail to the findings and when it's appropriate to do variances for signs. We haven't had a variance that's specific to signs, so it's been a little difficult to kind of navigate that one. Because there are certain circumstances where, you know, there might be an ability to give a variance on a sign. Where right now, we really don't advise or allow that with our current situation. So I'm just, you know, like I said, it, it is going to be a lot of information and it's going to take us a while to get through this and, and kind of make it make sense. So I'm going to just kind of allow you guys to kind of talk through for the rest of this and I'll try and answer your questions as best I can.
So are we good with stopping here? Unless there's something...
I think we need the whole gang here.
Yeah, I think so, too.
Really? I mean, I, I just want, don't want to dig into you.
We've given her a lot of feedback already and, you and I have, anyway. And I think it would be good to have the rest of everybody. And we'll, we'll be holding some public meetings so that we'll get feedback from the business community because that's really who we're going to hear from.
Yeah, and so I have hopefully a presentation at the next Open for Business meeting to get their input on it and just to kind of run through it and get some feedback. And then I've also asked the two major sign companies that do business in the city. I asked them if they would do a review of our proposed ordinance as well, and they were actually pretty excited for it. They've never had a city ask them what their input was. So I figure if they're the ones who are going to be reading this and interpreting it, that they probably should be involved to make sure that it's understandable and it makes sense. Because I think that's the other big thing that has come up with our current ordinance is it's, it is, I mean, it's hard for me to navigate to find the right answer or to figure out how to calculate something. And it, I've heard it from people who are trying to navigate it as well, that it's just not very intuitive. Some people have had difficulties trying to figure out what is allowable and what isn't. That always kind of happens, but I think in this case, I've heard it the most with the, the current sign ordinance.
I had one question on page 29, just for my understanding of it a little better. You have maintenance, non-conforming, street graphics must be maintained in good condition. And then down below, it's a certificate of non-conforming. Does that mean somebody that hasn't, currently has a non-conforming sign has to come in and get a permit? Or is this future or what? I mean...
Yeah.
It, so like, yeah.
So basically, what a certificate of, of non-conformity does is it helps non-conformings, basically, it helps us legally in that when we pass this, I would basically send out a letter to pretty much every business owner and say, you know, "We did change the sign ordinance. It is important to go look at it and we'll be off," it'll, usually they offer them for free because it basically is, "Okay, your sign doesn't fit into this." They have to normally sign a piece of paper saying, "I understand that this is a non-conforming sign and if I do one of these four things or if I do one of these five things, I will have to change that sign." And so it, so that way, if someone's going through and replaces a non-conforming sign with something different, it, it helps us on a legal side. Yeah, so that way we can say, "No, you did know about this." And we do that with a lot of other permits, too, where we have them sign an affidavit that basically says, "I understand the rules and regulations of this and if I am not compliant, that's my fault."
Okay, thank you. So unless somebody has...
Well, I would just request photos, illustrations and photos. This was a good start, but, you know, re, lots of photos, maybe a slideshow even, just to show kind of what we have, what's, what, what you think isn't working that we have, what would be, you know, conforming or non-conforming with what we have now compared to if we changes. Photos, photos, lots of photos. I mean, we do have a lot of photos in the guideline, in the, don't we still have the guidelines, the sign guidelines?
There's still, in the, if you go online and look at the sign ordinance, there are some pictures in there, but not huge amounts. Just more like what is a flush and what is a, this...
Oh, yeah, but yeah, I mean, signs in town, I mean, really, in context, what do we have? How is it working? How is it not working?
Maybe we need a subcommittee.
Would you like to? I mean, that, that is up to your purview if you'd like to assign a subcommittee.
To take the pictures and go around with somebody so that we can see two people?
I don't know if that's a subcommittee to do that, but...
Well, she doesn't really, it's like you're, we're asking, you know, I mean, it's like, this is something that, it's like, maybe you think something doesn't work and somebody else thinks something does, but if we have pictures that we can be compared.
Well, in, well, I'm just at, for, in, as she's trying to explain, like, what, how our existing one doesn't work with examples and how, and how the proposed one would work with examples. So I don't know that a subcommittee could do that, per se.
I can see the pros and cons of, of doing it, either way. If you did assign a subcommittee, basically what we would do is, is take this and work on it in-depth, similar to the cannabis subcommittee, where we would put together what zones would fit into each one. Because there are a lot of pieces of this that do have to be filled in and tweaked. So I could see the benefit of two people doing that. And plus, if, if I did have a subcommittee assigned to it, I would take them with me to those meetings for the businesses because maybe them, they could learn a little bit and then it's not just me regurgitating.
So, when are you going to start the meetings?
I'm sorry?
When are you going to start the meetings with the...
I was going to try and shoot for, I'm, I'm trying to arrange a, a Open for Business meeting at the beginning of November. I mean, the other thing, too, is you don't have to necessarily assign a subcommittee, but if someone is particularly interested in this, I, I would be more than happy to keep them in the loop about meetings or keep them in the loop about...
You know, I'm interested in this, so if you want to let me know when you're going to present it to these people, I'd like to know what's happening. I'd like to hear their...
Okay.
So we have somebody in the audience, I don't know, it's really, do we have, do, is this, do we open this to the public?
Yeah, you can if you...
Whenever possible.
Well, yeah, sometimes. So I'm going to close this for the moment and open it to the public, and we have a person that would like to speak to us.
Good evening.
May I run a little sec?
Hello, my name's Pam Nerona. I live in Mount Chasta. I just want to clarify the groups. I can hear that. The groups that you're going to speak to, I know you mentioned Mount Chasta Open for Business, but is the Chamber of Commerce on that list as well? Okay, and maybe DIAC?
Yeah.
Anybody else?
We're getting there. I mean, there's a number of groups that could request, someone has asked about DIAC doing it, but it's up to them if they want to review it or not. Open for Business has been the only one who's been really interested in what we're doing. And frankly, they tend to be the more opinionated of any other groups. So they're tend, they tend to be a good gauge for the rest of them.
My only recommendation was just include Chamber, which you have. Wanted to just confirm.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I'll now close the public comment period and we will, and I think we've all agreed that we can send Juliana forward. Good, for now?
But, because it doesn't seem like we've really decided anything. It's more just listening.
No, we haven't really decided, but she's got some information to flush this out and then when we have our more full commission...
And I have notes about clarifying a few things that you guys raised questions about, too, so...
Unless you think there's some different way of doing this, I don't know how else we're, this is rough. And we will, we will come back to it. So I'm going to close that, I guess that's what we're doing, is that just close it?
Close away.
We gave direction to city staff and now we'll go on to number six, which is a discussion on the November and December Planning Commission meetings.
All right, so this one, I noticed, so our November, our regularly scheduled meeting in November is the same week as Thanksgiving. And then similar to last year, we talked about having our meeting, our regular meeting in December or not. And I think last year, we decided on a special meeting that ended up not getting held because everyone got sick. So I wanted to bring this up early, so about, you know, whether we should cancel the too regularly scheduled and have one special meeting the first week of December. Frankly, I don't think we need both meetings because we will be doing a lot of general plan, public engagement during this whole time period right now. We've, we've started those kickoffs and, and we'll be doing that. So I wanted to leave it up to the Planning Commission to confirm whether they want to, you guys want to have your regularly scheduled meetings in November and December? The December one is the, Christmas is, I believe, on a Monday this year. Our regularly scheduled meeting is the week before that, so it's the Tuesday before that. So it's up to you guys how you want to do that, and I'm open for any direction. I think at least having one meeting before the new year would be great, but whether it's special or regular, it's up to you guys.
The general plan outreach that, so that the commission won't, isn't specifically involved in? Like what kind of outreach are you...
So the funny thing was, is I told Greg, "We've never had any issues or city councils had a ton of issues and now they've messed with it, now it doesn't work." So, sorry about that. Normally, we're okay. But, so the general, I'll comment, I'll do that in the staff comments as far as the educational workshops. Those are going to be option, I figured they'd be optional for you guys. The one thing we are going to talk about from the previous city council and, and Planning Commission meeting that you two were at, we are talking about having January be a joint meeting between Planning Commission and City Council to do, you know, Planning Commission and, and training and stuff like that about, you know, what Planning Commission does. So it's kind of our relative schedule right now, but we're really only working on one ordinance at a time and only doing day-to-day permits. So that's why I felt one more meeting for the end of the year wouldn't be that bad. But as far as the general plan workshops, I'm hoping to have two or three in the next month to a month and a half for just education and then launching the visioning survey that you guys looked at.
I personally think the Thanksgiving one should be pulled. It's too, it's too questionable of people.
Pull the rescheduled.
Yeah, and then, and I, perhaps a special meeting in December?
I'm flexible. I'll be around actually both times, so, but it's fine with me, whatever anybody chooses.
And with all these other meetings that we have the potential to go to, I'm not even sure we need the, to meet with the council. I'm not sure what, if we're going to be meeting in January, all of us, you know, the little one that we went to that, you know? I don't know exactly what we'd be discussing if we don't have any thing coming up, kind of, I don't know.
There's probably all those things to discuss.
Okay, well, if you can, yeah.
So since quite a bit of the commissioners are not here, would it just be appropriate for this action item for me to just send out an email to poll the other three as well to see what their schedules are? And then I'll just let you guys know over email what's happening and then I'll publicly notice if we cancel anything or schedule anything.
So, well, I guess I, does that mean that we are going to try and hold the November one?
It means that I'll just send out an email basically repeating what I just said to you guys.
So like, you're going to take a poll and see what everybody's doing?
Correct.
I'm fine with not doing November.
I won't be here.
He won't be there, so you got one, so that's fine.
Okay.
I'm around, too, so I can come to any of them. It doesn't matter, but...
Okay.
I mean, I'll be in town, but I'll have family here.
And that's, I assume there's a lot of those kinds of things.
I put it on the agenda because I thought we'd have a fuller commission, so I...
Yes, no.
So we can do it over email.
Because you're, you're going to also be scheduling these educational ones, too, so good, yeah, so there's going to be like, good luck on that one.
Yeah, we'll be good.
All right, so I guess we're not going to do anything until we take a further poll of our other commissioners and we wait, and wait for you with great patience to fill out our social calendar.
Like the patience really sounds...
So to speak. Okay, I'm going to move on to number nine.
It should be seven.
It should be seven.
Oops.
It's good. It's okay.
Well, they just turned the six upside down, so number...
Seven.
Seven.
So I just wanted to do two things really quick. We already talked, I'll do the B first. So the general plan education workshops, I'm going to sit back here because it's getting really terrible. The general plan education workshops are just kind of that informing sector we talked about. So it's going to talk about what a general plan is, why it's important to really participate during a general plan and then what the process we're going to take is. And I don't foresee it going over an hour, so I'm going to try and schedule at least two or three of those. I know I sent you guys an email about, you know, what are some preferable times and things like that, but for the sake of time tonight and the sound system, if you guys want to just reply to that email, that's fine, or you can talk about it here. I'm hoping to have one on either a Wednesday or Thursday evening, starting at like 5:30 at the public library, which is a little bit more centrally located, and then possibly having one here. And then I'm going to record it so that I can put it on the general plan webpage, which I did launch. It's on our planning webpage. I'm really excited because I created a graphic for it and I'm not creative at all, as you can see by my beautiful drawings over there. So I have launched the portal page with some information on the general plan rewrite and I'll be putting up all of the public engagement dates and information. So that's kind of what those are, so I wanted to put those on your radar. And then just to do a recap, so the, the city council did the first reading of the cannabis ordinance package that you guys approved and they were extremely happy with it. They chose to increase the number of permits back up to five in each category for a total of 15. And they really did not change any other aspect of the ordinances. They thought they were really well put together and wanted to thank Commissioner Kirby and Beck for that. That was really great of them to do the subcommittee. So hopefully those will be approved this Monday and then it'll be 30 days after that it'll be ratified and then we'll just be rolling.
By the way, there was no one in the, in the audience that protested at all.
Interesting.
Just like here, just like, just like here. Anybody else like to, any commission members want to make a comment tonight? No. Number 10 is future agenda items, or number eight is future agenda items.
Any questions? I mean, we're basically, so these are alternative dates. I'm just going to have us work on one ordinance at a time until we get through the last three that were charged to us. Special events would be the next one and that was charged to us from the city council. So ideally, I mean, if we don't have, we're not going to get through this sign ordinance in two meetings, so that'll probably get pushed back until we're done, unless you guys feel comfortable doing both at the same time.
That seems like one at a time is plenty.
And they're pretty heavy ones, so the lighting ordinance is pretty much, we're fini, I'm finishing that one up and, and doing some environmental assessment of that one, so...
Okay, that's the future and number nine is adjourning the, we are adjourning to the next scheduled meeting, which is at this time, Tuesday, November 21st, 2017, and may be altered.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. At 6:00 PM, by the way, right.